A regular scheduled board meeting on November ninth at just a little after seven o'clock. If I can ask the clerk to please call the roll call.
Trustee Bachner.
Here.
Trustee Kargi.
Here.
Trustee Vasquez.
Here.
Trustee Brennan.
Here.
Trustee Hennick.
Here.
Trustee O'Connell.
Here.
President Adusi.
Here. Okay, if I can ask you to stand or help and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Okay, we have three citizens comments and so we can, we can go ahead and take them because um, we're going to get through this consent agenda hopefully really quick. Um, so why don't we do this, we'll wait till we get to that part because it will go really quick. So I will now go to the, if that's okay with Susan, Lisa and Mary. I see Susan, I see Lisa, I don't see Mary, but maybe she'll jump on in a minute. Um, okay, so why don't we start with the elected official comments and announcements and then we'll get to the citizens comments when it comes to the bike plan. So if I can ask trustee O'Connell? Go first, please.
Thank you, good evening everyone, hope everyone is enjoying these fine spring days we're having. Um, I just, I only have one thing tonight and um, I attended with, along with Eric and members of the other interested parties, the River Forest Center Authority Building, we had a call about a week and a half ago, went through several plans the consultant is working on at this point in time. And what we did was we had a lot of information and we kind of, actually we went through a lot of stuff in a short amount of time and have scheduled another meeting, so, so looking forward to that. And then also is not only a member of this board but also a resident of Keystone, looking forward to our conversation later this week on the explanation of the, hopefully the resolution of the flooding issue on the 1100 block of Keystone, so that's all I have for tonight, thanks.
Thursday, Thursday, okay. All right, very good, thank you Bob.
Yes, Thursday, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just asked, it's Thursday, thanks. Okay, trustee Hennick, please.
Good evening, everyone, the only thing I would like to update is in regard to the Holiday Food and Gift Basket Program. I mentioned at the last meeting that I had to reimagine the program and needed to raise an additional $100,000 in order to provide a target gift card to all participants. I do have an increase in participants this year, so over 2,000 people will be receiving support through the Holiday Food and Gift Basket. And I am close but not to my fundraising goal, I still have around $10,000, $12,000 to raise ideally this week. So if anybody out there listening can contribute and go to the community of congregations to donate, that would be great, thanks, that's it.
Okay, very good, thanks. Um, okay, so trustee Brennan.
Hi, thanks. Um, two things, I wanted to thank everyone who participated in the 2020 Great Pumpkin Smash this year, which happened this past Saturday at Roosevelt Middle School. It was the second annual, thanks to Lisa Gillis who gave me the numbers, which came in much quicker than the ballots this year, I guess it's easier to count pumpkins than it is votes. We collected 805 pumpkins and composted them, and as a reminder to everyone, the reason why we do this is because keeping organics out of the landfill reduces greenhouse gases because organics when they decompose give off greenhouse gas emissions. It's also financial savings to each and every resident because we pay by the pound for our trash collection and for organic collection from the street. So if you put your pumpkins in the street, we pay for that, if you put your pumpkins in the trash, we pay for that too. So Strom was one of our partners in this endeavor and they give us this for free. So I want to thank Strom and Spears, which are usually partner on this, and Roosevelt Middle School, and the Sustainability Commission. Um, I want to, also I want to encourage you to put your pumpkins in heavier items like plants with earth on them, which I see, see out in our streets along with our leaves. To your compost, whether it's your backyard compost or if you participate in the village's wonderful curbside compost program. If you don't, ask one of your neighbors who does if they'll put your, that stuff in their compost bin for you. Or better yet, I invite you to subscribe so that you too can enjoy all of the benefits of our wonderful curbside composting program. And thanks to Lauren Behan on our Sustainability Commission for all of her work on the Great Pumpkin Smash. And then the second item is to let you know that the village is recycling unwanted yard signs. They will take corrugated plastic signs and their metal stakes, this is like those campaign signs that we've been seeing all around town. This is a wonderful opportunity to keep these plastic items out of the landfill, they do not break down, they just sit there in the ground. So drop off is open, I believe now, and available 24 hours a day through November 30th. There is a red recycling box that is located on Central Avenue, under the train, the biaduct between Village Hall and the tennis and paddle courts. And it's a special note that this is a special drop off and that you cannot recycle these corrugated plastic yard signs and the metal stakes in your regular recycling, just at a particular location. Before you toss your campaign sign into these, this bin, please consider saving it for future use. You can attach a new message to the board, or you can use it for birthday signs or to promote special events. And if you don't need a sign, consider whether you know a candidate or a school or a non-for-profit that could use the sign or at least could use the stakes. Um, again, the red bin is located under the tracks by Village Hall. Please don't put any other trash in that red bin, especially no dog poop, we've had a problem with that before. And thank Lisa Gillis and the Sustainability Commission for handling this recycling program, that's all I have.
Great, thank you very much Katie, okay, Res. Or yeah, Res and I'll circle back with.
Okay, no problem, just want to say good evening to everyone and I have no additional comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Tom.
Hello to everyone, dear committee, we're meeting the 17th, still going over, still collating the responses to the survey. And Sarah has produced a couple maps that are interesting, and actually Sarah, I should have thought of this earlier, could you share the, at least the one heat map with everyone on the board, when you get a chance? Other than that, I have, happy with the outcome of the election, I have to say, but other than that, I have nothing else to say.
Thanks Tom, okay. Trustee Bachner.
Thank you, I'd like to start off with a land acknowledgement. As we begin, we are mindful that we hold these meetings on lands that once and still is inhabited by indigenous people including the Oba Chawa, the Chippewa, the Menominee, the Palawami Nations and more. We will remember our nation's history and honor the native people as stewards of this land that was colonized. And the River Forest continues to be a place many people from diverse backgrounds live and gather. Not too much from me, just want to highlight that Kathy, Eric and I were able to meet over the course last week and just get some ideas put together and start the process of talking through internal advisory group around equity and what that would look like and what it means for the board. And so I think that we will have something to present to the board at our next meeting. Besides that, not too much more.
Okay, very good, thank you Erica. Clerk, do you have anything Kathleen?
Just how appreciative I was of how, well, at least that I witnessed, everyone managed Halloween. I feel like they all did, at least in our neighborhood, a great job of social distancing and respecting everyone's wishes with regards to whether or not they're participating. Spirits were high, the weather was great. And as I work in a health office at a high school, I'm, you know, keenly aware of the numbers and just would urge everyone to, you know, it's getting serious again, so please use every bit of caution you can.
Very good, thank, thank you, gosh, Halloween seems so far away.
I know.
I forgot about it, but thank you for reminding me of just how well I believe our community did in the whole, you know, working with Halloween and those that chose not to be participant and, which was great and was very accepting and everyone was very welcoming and it was just a wonderful day. I got so many calls that people said, hey, can we do that, like that next year where we just put out a table and, and I'm like, well, you know, we can do almost anything you all want. So anyway, it was a great, I think everyone just rallied and did a great, great job. So thank you for reminding us of that Kathleen. A couple of things that I was involved with, last week, the mayors of the West Central Municipally got together when Governor Pritzker put out his executive order for banning indoor dining. Of course, many of the, the surrounding communities have a lot of indoor dining. We have a few that are important to us as well. And we talked about how we should address this, but at the end of the day, what we all agreed to is it wouldn't be wise for any one of us to defy the governor's order, it's the executive order, it's the right thing to do and that we should work very hard in ensuring that we ask everyone to wear their mask, social distance and do the right thing so that we can whip this virus and, and get it behind us as quickly as we can. So it was a good conversation, all the mayors were on the call and we all have great relationships, so I'm happy we, we got together on that topic. I also was asked to introduce one of our very own authors here in River Forest, her name is Michelle Weldon. Michelle has written several books, one in 2002 that was identified, was part of the Oprah Winfrey Show. And so she wrote, she's written another one just recently and it's titled Act Like You're Having A Good Time. And so she asked me to introduce herself as well as get the participants to, you know, participate in the book discussion. The River Forest Library was gracious enough to host the discussion and I think they had roughly about 35 participants. So it was a great success. If you like essays, it's a collection of essays, if you like essays, go out and, go out and buy it, the book table has the book. And you'll be patronizing a phenomenal River Forest resident. I want to just echo with what Katie said about the pumpkin smash. I think it was again, a great opportunity for, for us to do a great sustainable initiative and keep all of that, all the pumpkins out of the landfill as she mentioned. And I know at the end you gave Lauren Behan a great shout out. Actually Lauren, I think picked up a lot of pumpkins in curbside. So all she asked is if, you know, folks were interested in the pumpkin smash, just, and you couldn't make it, just put your pumpkins on the curbside and she took her two by four, whatever, four by four truck and she piled it all up, her and her family. So it was an awesome volunteer effort and I very much appreciate her and of course Lisa and the, all of the Sustainability Commission that, you know, helped us get through these, you know, these interesting times, especially sustainability issues. Okay, that's all I have, so I'll ask that we go to the consent agenda.
Hey Kathy, Kathy?
Yeah.
Excuse me, just for curiosity, I reached out to the management company at, at River Forest Town Center regarding Panera. The closing there is just, is just temporary, so, you know, hopefully with, with the virus settling down a little bit, you know, they're primarily a dine-in business, but you know, so the carryout apparently isn't just sustaining them right now, but hopefully they'll be back up and operating shortly, so.
Yeah, thank you Bob, I forgot to mention that, so I'm very, thank you very much because I know many people are concerned, but to the best of our knowledge, just temporary. They've been very successful and they're very successful throughout, I think, all of Illinois. So thank you for mentioning that. Okay, so if I can ask to get a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through E.
Motion to approve the consent agenda items A through E.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, trustee O'Connell seconded, trustee Bachner moved it. Um, okay, any discussions or questions on these items? Hearing none, I'd ask the clerk to please read those items and then take the vote.
Consent agenda, item A, Village Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes, October 26, 2020. B, Amendment to Intergovernmental Agreement and Subrecipient Agreement with Cook County for an additional $12,000 in CARES Act funding. C, Monthly Department Reports. D, Accounts Payable, October 2020, $2,636,1129. E, Village Administrators Report. Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
Trustee Kargi?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trust, trustee Hennick?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Do have one consent item for separate consideration, so if I can have a trustee move and another second it and then we can go for a vote. This is item 6A.
I move we approve payment from the general fund to McDonald's Caravetes for $140.09.
Second.
And I have a question here.
Yep.
Oh, sorry Bob, do you want to?
No, go ahead.
Okay, no, I just, I had a question about this item. I was wondering, is, I think that this is typically less money, so I wanted to just get a sense of why it was a larger amount, if there's any like background we should know about what's happening in the community. I also, and I just recognized this before the meeting, but I don't think this was a part of our packet necessarily, so maybe just for public reference, if the memo.
It was.
It was?
Yeah, it's always been.
Right, I just, okay, I didn't see it in the, maybe I missed it through the different pages, but I couldn't find it today, that's fine. It's aligned with the consent agenda. Oh, it's part of the consent, okay.
But do you mean Erica, do you mean specific information regarding?
No, I just literally meant the memo, so I may, I may have just misplaced a memo.
Don't worry.
Um, yeah, if anybody can speak to the.
All right, can Lisa or Eric, I mean, I mean, is there anything that's unusual about this? No.
No, this is just, this provides, these are meals, go to meals for individuals that are detained.
Right.
So there's nothing, nothing unusual or different here.
Okay.
And I believe it's two months worth.
If I.
All right, this is Rosie, I believe it's like, it's, it's just, it was not paid last month, so one month, so it's probably two months.
Okay, I just wanted to know. Thanks Rosie.
Sure, I'd ask the clerk, I'd ask the clerk not to call my name due to my employer's relationship with the franchisee.
Okay, 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 very good, if I can, Kathleen, if you could read it and take the vote, please.
6A, Accounts Payable from the General Fund to McDonald's Caravetes for the, for $140.09. Trustee O'Connell, not conflict of interest. So trustee Kargi?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Hennick?
Yes.
Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. Um, we have no recommendations from boards and commissions and committees tonight, so we'll go on to the unfinished business. So we have three residents that asked to speak, so I'll ask Suzanne Morrison if you're on the line and you can star six yourself and, or unmute, and you've got the floor.
Hey, hi, having done this before, I'm just gonna, Suzanne Morrison, 7205 Iowa. My house is situated along the single-family homes on the 800 and 900 blocks of Harlem. Just in the last couple of days, the River Forest Bike Plan came to our attention of the homeowners here on these two blocks. And we're concerned because we saw that Harlem was designated as quote, "a side path slash trail", end quote, and there didn't seem to be any sort of definition describing what that would consist of. So today I had some back and forth emails with Eric Com and Andy Bassney of the Bike Task Force. I was reassured to hear from both of them that there's nothing imminent planned along Harlem. But it was, Eric did concur that in order to widen, or in order to do a bike path along Harlem, that it can't happen on Harlem, not only because that's unsafe, but it's I dot jurisdiction. So if something in the future were to happen with regards to a bike path slash trail, the sidewalk would need to be widened. So I, I just want to take a moment to note that with everything on the bike plan, Harlem Avenue and North Avenue as well are significantly different than the rest of the bike plan. The rest of the bike plan appears to consist of planting signs in the parkways and painting stripes onto the streets to create a bike lane. So in the case of Harlem and also North Avenue where it's an undefined side path slash trail, and it's, both of those are I dot jurisdiction, it seems that, you know, any sort of trail or path is going to have to come up onto the sidewalk and the parkway. And, you know, so I can see at this moment, this juncture for the Bike Task Force, it was mentioned by Andy Bassney that it was not discussed what exactly this meant in terms of creating a bike path or trail on these streets of Harlem North, it was not discussed. But it was made, it was designated onto the plan. And the issue here is the parkway along Harlem is maybe at best 30 inches wide, maybe, and it has already traffic signs, streetlights, and there are pace plans to put in heated bus stops along Harlem Avenue. So there is not enough space now or in the future to put in a widened, a widened path or a widened sidewalk to accommodate both bikes and pedestrians. I'm not clear, you know, on if this was not discussed by the Bike Task Force, then it seems like it's something that does need to be thought through. So obviously for the homeowners here along Harlem, our big concern is in order to realistically create something wide enough for pedestrians and bicyclists, that some of our property, some of our frontage will be needed. So at this point in time, given that nothing is planned on Harlem, we, we're hopeful that maybe you guys would consider removing the bike path slash trail designation from Harlem. And then at some later time, when and if it's decided that something needs to be done along Harlem to accommodate bicyclists, that at that time perhaps more than the minimal legal obligation of, more of a courtesy could, could happen where we could be invited to be at the table for discussion and decisions about what happens to the frontage along our homes. That was it.
Okay, okay, well, thank you Suzanne. Okay, thank you.
Follow up question then, is that, is it plausible, is, can that be considered? Or, or how would we, as a group of neighbors, work to get that on an agenda? Which agenda, like what next steps do we need to take to see that this is followed through on?
Right, well, I guess I'll ask, I don't think our plan has anything on Harlem.
No, it does.
I meant like anything like this.
Oh, you mean for implementation?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, the bike plan that was adopted in 2019 looks at all the major arterial routes throughout town.
Right.
And if you go back and look, the plan also looks at other plans that were developed. So one of the other plans that was developed was through the West Central Municipal Conference that looks at the region, right? So how do we navigate traffic through not just River Forest, but regionally? And Harlem was identified as a roadway because of its connectivity through the area as well as its connectivity to public transportation. So I would want to circle back with Eric Russell at KLOA to get some more information about that.
Okay.
So I suspect that's part of the reason it was put in there as a long-term vision. But there's no, as I indicated to Mrs. Morrison this afternoon, there are no plans, not only in what we're looking at tonight, but in the future at putting any type of bike routes on Harlem. Secondarily, a lot of the routes that you see in town that are north, south streets are done so, so that people don't have to go to Harlem Avenue, so. So before, before we do anything, I would just want to check in with Eric Russell at KLOA to confirm my belief and see if that's correct or if there's something else I'm missing before we would do anything else to the plan.
Um, okay, quick follow-up on that, our concern, to be honest, comes down to eminent domain and that we're not unrealistic that at some point in time, some of our frontage is probably going to be needed. But if we right now, having had no seat at the table and no input into it and it's marked out on a map, it puts us at a disadvantage going forward. We would like it removed from that map so that if and when at a later time the budget and things begin to move forward to have a regional bike plan or to have the Village Bike Plan include Harlem Avenue, we would like some sort of heads up and part in that process, which we did not get with the 2019 bike plan.
Okay. Okay, so how do, I mean, I think that's a reasonable request, ask, so I'm, so if we, I mean, I don't know.
We can put it on for the next agenda with a follow-up, I just would want the opportunity to confirm that with this Russell first.
Right.
And I'm happy to put it on for the next meeting.
Yeah, to remove the discussion.
Unless there's some sort of imminent reason for doing so that's crucial, that I'm just not thinking of.
Right.
I just want to check with our paid consultant and then we can report back to the board.
Okay.
That sounds great, can I ask who's talking right now, is that Andy?
That's Eric, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say.
Eric, okay.
So that's Eric talking and so we agree that, you know, or that I think he just wants to talk to his consultant and then circle back with you and other residents along Harlem and we'll figure out how to make this work, right?
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Yeah, of course, thank you.
Um, and I just want to take one last moment, I, I don't think you guys get to hear this often enough, but thank you so much for your unpaid time doing this kind of unthanked job. So thank you for, you know, sharing everything in the village, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night.
We'll take the compliment, thank you.
Yeah, all right, good night.
All right, very good, okay, so Mary Banker, I didn't see her, but is she on the line? Okay, we'll circle back if Mary joins. Lisa, Lisa Gillis? Is Lisa?
She's still muted.
Oh, star six Lisa?
No, no, I just unmute, unmute, I wouldn't know how to do star six. Hello, my name is Lisa Gillis and I live at 1043 Keystone Avenue. And so I just wanted to, I guess, voice my support for the bike plan, thank you for allowing me to speak. Obviously, we've talked about, the, the board has spoken about this last month, it's on the agenda for this month. I think that all plans, you know, will evolve over time and will, you know, kind of have to adjust based on, you know, kind of, the devil is in the detail, does you implement, but I do believe that this bike, bike plan is an important plan that we need to implement. I think that we've seen an increase in cyclists on the street of all ages brought on by COVID. Bike sales are through the roof right now, very hard to actually buy a bike in some parts of the world right now. And we need to have a bike plan, I'm a fervent supporter of it because it keeps both our pedal-powered people and those in, and motorists safe, you know, having clear delineation on the streets of what, you know, kind of where bikers are. And, you know, making sure that there's enough signage so bikers know where to go, whether they're residents of the village or not. So I encourage the board to, to embrace implementation of this plan. Thank you very much.
All right, very good, thank you Lisa. All right, did Mary, has Mary joined or, I don't, okay. All right, not. All right, not hearing Mary, then we'll go ahead and move on to, this is just Eric, the Village Board, or the staff is looking for consensus to move ahead with the bicycle plan. Obviously, last time we met, we had a lot of good discussion regarding the signs, and I think you revised the plan, and I'm sure everyone got a chance to look at it. So is there anything, Eric, that you'd like to add or comment?
No, we took the direction from the board and asked to remove the wayfinding signs. So the result is still the pavement markings, which are in the plan, and then the other just bike lane and crossing-related signs. That reduction netted us in the engineering estimate of about $46,000. So, you know, the, the project cost is now about 140, just a hair under $148,000. And then we will have the grant from Cook County as well that should come in around $30,000, $35,000. We're waiting on the final amount for that. And then the rest of the funds will be through the Capital Improvement Fund.
Very good.
So if I could just offer some thoughts after having reviewed this some more since our last meeting, and then reviewing the comprehensive plan that came out of, I mean, the bike plan that came out of the whole comprehensive plan process. So I know at our last meeting, we talked about the possibility of phasing this project, and there was some question about what that might look like and what pieces to phase. And then I know I personally had raised the point about wanting to maybe look at this conservatively in terms of spending in light of COVID and not really knowing where we're going to be financially moving forward, even though we might seem more in a good place now, we're not out of COVID. And so I guess I thought I was expecting more of a breakdown of this plan in terms of how it would look like phased. And looking at the bike plan that was put together, that was drafted as a phased plan. And so the near phase was the, what would be the orange routes on the map. The mid-range, midterm phase would have included the main streets like Lathrop, Chicago, and such. And then the long-term phase would have included essentially the routes that Suzanne Morrison spoke to, which would be more infrastructure along North Avenue and Harlem. And so, and then it also provided a timeline of when these might be implemented. So I absolutely support wanting to encourage bike riding, particularly to make bike riding safer would be important. But I also would like to see that we could perhaps look at this in a way to prioritize what helps us encourage bike riding, what is priority in terms of safety. So like reading the plan where it talked about making sure that we had infrastructure at major street crossings, like for instance Keystone and Lake. So making sure we address that sort of thing. I don't know what's been done already, but if not. And so when I look at this, that comprehensive plan as well, when you're looking at the results of the survey, and it shows that 79% of respondents bike in the community, of that about 70% already feel comfortable riding in the community, and that a barrier to bike riding is whether or not bike racks are available at our stores. So then my question, sort of to the point I made at the last meeting, was are there infrastructure pieces that we could be spending on that would actually add more value, that would help encourage more bike riding than implementing the plan as presented? Because it looks to me as if the plan that's presented is combining the near-term phase and the midterm phase. And I personally would like to see what it would look like cost-wise if we did the near phase, which would give us those gold routes, right, currently, and then look to see what other pieces are included in the bike plan that would help encourage bike riding and ensure we have safety issues addressed.
Hey Patty, can I ask for a point of clarification? What infrastructure are you referring to at Keystone and Lake? I'm sorry.
If you look in the bike plan that came out in 2018, 2019, it's like a 67-page document, it talks about the priority actions of the projects, and it lists three of them. And so one of those specifically says bicycle safety, infrastructure at major street crossings, and the example was Keystone. I'm like, it doesn't spell it out specifically, Bob, so I'm really not 100% sure what specifically they're recommending there. I'm just saying that was a point within that bike plan, that was a point that was raised. And then, you know, talks about increasing education and having materials available for people to have safer bike riding in town. I mean, there, there's a lot of good pieces in that bike plan that I think we could incorporate and maybe even be more mindful of the spending, but yet still address safety and address encouraging more people to bike.
Eric, if we were to do this in a piecemeal fashion, doesn't that increase the overall cost? Because you've now got staging issues and, and all the things that are associated with basically setting up to do this, if you're doing it twice, doesn't that increase the overall cost of the project?
Yeah, you're, you're always going to lose economy to scale when you break things up. So to the extent of which that is, I couldn't tell you off the cuff, but generally speaking, that's always the rule, the more you bring in together, the, the less money it's going to cost.
I do have another question about the signs. There's still a lot of signs, and as long as the signs have been determined to be necessary for safety, I'm fine with it. I was hoping for more economy on signs, but, but if, and I couldn't, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I can't tell you if you need to place the signs as near together as you do to get the safety benefits. But is it the sign decision based on safety and nothing else?
So, yeah, the signage right now is marking the designated routes, where we want bikers to go when they're in town. So to the extent we're concerned about their safety, making sure they're on the right streets, then yes, those, those signs are important. The other thing I would say in terms of the short-term, near-term recommendations, the near-term were the largest amount of recommendations, and the short-term were a smaller, a smaller bucket as well. And then, you know, in terms of things like biking, biking facilities and things like that, certainly we'd want to encourage that, but I don't know if we necessarily would want to pay for those facilities on other people's properties, like Jewel and other places. That would be, you know, I'm not sure if we would necessarily want to do that either.
Yeah. And the parks have a lot of bicycle.
Can I ask you, I couldn't remember offhand, when the bike plan came out, did it go through the Traffic and Safety Commission as well?
It's a good question. I'd have to go back and look. I don't recall.
You know, it went to a Bike Task Force.
No, I knew, I knew there was a Bike Task Force.
I think it actually went to the Sustainability Commission. Katie, help us out here. I think we talked to, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we worked with Eric Russell. He drafted a bike plan, and then we thought out residents who are interested in biking, whether they wanted to or were already avid bicyclists. And we had several meetings with Eric Russell and looking at his plan, spreading out big sheet maps all over tables. And, and we're very fortunate tonight to have Andy Basni also with us, who chaired that task force. And he can speak and, you know, correct what I'm saying. But it did go through the Sustainability Commission, as far as I know. I don't know about Traffic and Safety, but it was, you know, part of the comp plan. And it's addressed a lot in the Traffic and Safety portion of the comp plan.
Hey Katie, I just got a text from somebody on the Traffic and Safety Board, and they did see it. It started there.
Yeah, and can I, can I just ask, even though Andy may not have signed up to speak?
Yeah, no, of course. Yeah, of course. Andy, if you want to, I know I saw two Andy Basneys out there, so hopefully.
Yeah, I think I'm somewhere else too, so sorry about that. And thanks again for allowing me to talk a little bit. I mean, I also am a strong advocate, but I'm also practical and a realist, and I know that, you know, to put together a bike plan, sometimes you have to have vision and sort of condense some steps together in terms of implementation. And, you know, one of the objectives of the task force was to get people that are already biking the village, their input in terms of what sort of challenges they're already experiencing. Obviously, pre-COVID, in terms of them getting to work and getting across town and different things, and, and safety is obviously the primary objective, and, and sort of doing it and getting the flows right across the village, and sort of interacting with pedestrians and getting bike racks in public spaces. So that's a little bit of the feedback, but I know that there's also some, you know, probably some cost restrictions, but I know that, you know, the, the plan itself is, is one that a lot of people advocate for and, and hope get implemented.
So, so if I could ask maybe to address, you know, Patty's concern, I mean, would it make any sense to, like, phase it in? I mean, like, like Eric said, the first phase is small and the second phase is bigger. To me, it would make some sense to, not only the economy to scale, but to, to, you know, to do it all, if, if we were going to do it.
Yeah, I mean, talking with other people that sort of work at bike shops and things, I mean, they kind of say, you know, behavior is dictated by, you know, getting white, you know, stripings on the, on the roads and different things like that to sort of get the behavior moving. I imagine maybe some of the signage could get phased in, you know, that could, but I think getting some, getting some of the, you know, the, the markings on the streets and sort of that all, all put in place is a good start. And then, you know, my, my concern is always, if you, if you stop, when do you start again, right? So as long as there's sort of a concerted commitment to sort of getting through the other phases.
Yeah.
So if I may, the, the reason I'm also asking about the Traffic and Safety Commission is, in part, I guess for me personally, and again, looking at responses from the survey, it seems creating bike routes on the main streets like Chicago Avenue and Lathrop, I'm not quite sure why we want to encourage more bikes on those streets. I mean, I'm just thinking about Lathrop, particularly during rush hour, school gets out, how traffic can be backed up, you know, by Roosevelt all the way to Lake Street. I know driving, I take Lathrop all the time to my mom's, if there are work trucks parked on Lathrop, or lawn care companies parked on Lathrop, you could barely get around them to continue north if I'm going to Elmwood Park, and so you're crossing that middle line. And it seems, again, why would we want to encourage this as a right route for bicyclists? So I get that we have these other routes going north-south. Why not encourage that to be where people are going and not necessarily on these main streets? And so that's why I was questioning as far as traffic and safety in terms of these specific routes. I know during the same, roughly the same time, I, I'm guessing, when Chicago Avenue was redone and the bumpouts were put in place, I know there were bicyclists in town that attended those meetings, raising concerns about the bumpouts and what that, it's going to do for a potential bike route down Chicago Avenue. And so I feel like this was all kind of happening at the same time. To Suzanne Morrison's point, I'm not sure how much the community at large, so yes, it was on our meeting last month and now, but in terms of pushing this out for community residents to really take a look at, here's what this is potentially going to look like with all these markings throughout town on the street, with all these signs throughout, and having people have an opportunity that this is what we're specifically looking at. So that's again where I would.
Okay, well, hang on.
Oh yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
Bob, is that you?
Yeah, I, I, I thought we talked about this like six months ago, and then the plan was just kind of being developed. So it sounds like you're trying to go back to square one a little bit, Katie, or Patty, and, and I mean, if you say that about Lathrop, then you could say it about parks. So again, this is, this is, again, we've had a plan in front of us, and, you know, we were kind of just talking about the numbers, not reinventing the wheel. So again, I'm confused.
Okay, well, hang on. So I do think, to address your question, I think Patty, and correct me if wrong, but I mean, this started several years back. I mean, under the, like, as trustee Brennan said, it started at the comprehensive plan, the bike plan was part of that. Then the Sustainability Commission spent, I think, considerable amount of time looking at it, along with the Bike Task Force that actually, under Katie's leadership, took place, which of course Andy was part of and several other people. So I, it's, it's been, I'm going for, at least in my mind, two years, maybe more.
Well, no, 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 and I'm not saying that.
So, hang on, hang on. So I, I mean, I'm, and the Traffic and Safety Commission, I think you said looked at it. So, so I don't know what else more we, you know, we could do. I mean, I think with Susan Morrison, her issue is very separate, and I, she brought up a good one, and, and like Eric said, that one is more I dot, and we will work on that to, you know, to ensure that there's no issues along Harlem. So, but it's been out there.
But what I'm, well, but so, again, Suzanne Morrison is, like I'm saying, is an example that you're saying it was out there, but yet all these residents on Harlem who are now speaking up weren't aware of it. And so, yes, I, I appreciate that this has been discussed and moving towards, but in terms of having something concrete to look at, in terms of what does this really look like, right? It wasn't until our last meeting for us to even get a sense of all the signage and everything else. So even though the concept of a plan has been in conversation for a while, specifics as far as what does this actually look like, has not really been out there.
That's not true, Patty. I'm sorry to disagree with you, but this specific plan, and I think you said it was a 67-page plan, I don't have it in front of me, it's presented to the Village Board several times by Eric Russell. I know Andy and I were involved over the years, and the Village Board voted on this specific plan, page of it, in 2019. So with all due respect to Suzanne Morrison and all of the residents, you know, we do our best to push, push these agendas out to them. They can sign up to get the packet sent to them, but, you know, I, I don't know what else we can do. This has been on the, the agenda multiple times.
And Kathy, Kathy, can I mention something? And, and I totally, putting Suzanne Morrison's issue aside for now, but we, there's the balancing of safety, not only for what Patty is raising, but how about all the current cyclists who are riding? Right now, they are riding on all those streets, Chicago, Lathrop, whatever. Sometimes the outlining of these streets also helps drivers to realize that there are now legitimate bike lanes they need to respect cyclists on. And so you have that balancing that we have to deal with. So this discussion has been going on, and I appreciate it. I'm not minimizing Patty's issues or concerns, but I'm also weighing all the other cyclists who are riding on the, our streets in the village, and we have to deal with safety for them as well. So I'm, I'm okay with moving forward.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I am too. I mean, it's a, a great plan and a lot of thinking behind it. All right, any other further comments? So it sounds like we have consensus to move forward, unless I'm hearing, other than Patty, I'm, I'm hearing that it's, it's, you know, let's move ahead and begin the bid process and see how that goes. Okay. All right, I appreciate it. Thank you. I think it's going to be a good plan. All right, so up next is 9A, which is the acceptance of the estimated 2020 corporate property tax levy. If I can get a motion in a second, so we can discuss it.
I move to accept the estimate for the 2020 corporate aggregate property tax levy in the amount of $8,130,737. Second.
Second.
Great. This is going to be in a, hopefully, an exciting discussion. I'm going to ask Eric or Rosie to lead the beginning of it, and then we'll talk more about it.
Right. So each year, under, required under law, we have to provide an estimate of the property tax levy to you before we bring it back for approval at a subsequent meeting. So the packet tonight reflects that. As we were planning on putting the, the property tax levy together, as we normal do, normally do before Village Board meetings, as we were reviewing this with the Village President, she'd asked us to go back and take a look at the levy, and in light of the economy, COVID, 2020 in general, asked us to take a look at it and see if there was a way we could rely on a flat levy for this year. So we went back that, at that, Rosie and I took a look at that, and as a result, are proposing just that to you tonight. And so based on, you know, our healthy, as we've talked about, the healthy amount of reserves that we have, we're able to propose that to you. So what you're seeing in front of you tonight is a, a property tax levy. So what you're seeing in front of you tonight is a property tax levy that essentially mirrors closely to what we've what we did last year in terms of taxes extended. The only difference is that the library is still seeking its cost of living or I should say, consumer price index CPI amount. So that theirs is reflected, they will take the CPI of the 2.3%, but the villages, as you can see, will actually go down a little bit next year. And so we're pleased in light of, again, 2020, COVID, the economy, et cetera, we're pleased that we're all of our previous years of financial stewardship have put us in a position to be able to do this.
Well, first of all, let me let me just comment and then I'll open it up. I I want to first thank Eric, Rosie, Lisa, all the staff to take on this challenge. I know it's a hard one, but I'm I'm very pleased with where we're at. You know, we talk about building economic development and getting it back to our taxpayers. We talk about, you know, being more efficient and more effective and and spending less and and Eric has done a phenomenal job with his team in cutting expenses. We talk about, you know, where we can, you know, when we build up our reserves and we have, you know, you know, a great funding for both our reserve, for our fifth, our capital improvement program and our capital replacement program, they're, you know, mostly funded. And that's because of really good fiscal policies over the last eight to 10 years. I mean, we have done what our taxpayers want us to do, and that is, you know, spend their money wisely, you know, save where we can and cut expenses. And we've been able to do that. And now we are at today, an ability to give back to our taxpayers. You know, as Eric said, COVID-19 is is people are hurting, people need a break. And we're only talking, I know about the village portion of our tax bill, which is 11% of our taxpayers' money, but every dollar counts. And where we can save a taxpayer any money, we should do it. And so I'm very pleased about this introduction of this levy and I hope that all of you will see the same thing that I have seen, and that is this is a time to give back to our taxpayers today, this year.
Kathy, I agree with you. I I think the most important part of this, aside from not taking the COLA increase, is to not levy against new construction. The point of economic development, in my mind, is to increase the tax base so that we can lower the tax burden of the residents. If we just consistently levy against new construction, we increase our the levy that we can apply in the next tax year, which doesn't provide any tax benefits to the taxpayers, all it does is increase our levy. This year, I'm guessing it's a relatively nominal amount, but next year, when the senior center comes online, it'll be a significant amount. And I won't be here, but I hope that this board, along with all the other taxing bodies in River Forest, choose to decline to levy against that because for the school districts, for instance, there are no students coming from it. So there is no additional cost to them from that new construction. Again, if you do TIFs, it only makes sense from an economic perspective to the benefit of taxpayers to not levy against that new property in the first year, because then there's no increase in, I'm sorry, there's no decrease in overall taxation, all there is is an increase in revenue. So I applaud Kathy. Eric, as always, you guys do an excellent job. I think that this is a long time in coming for us, to be honest. And so I'm I hardly agree.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. And and just let me kind of augment on what Tom said about new construction, and he's absolutely right. You know, we 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 talked about one of our goals is stabilizing property taxes, and we do that because we build economic development. And when we build economic development, the hope is is that that, you know, new development will produce more revenue for our all of our taxing bodies. And so if we're going to create development, then we need to give it back in some fashion, some form to our taxpayers. And and I agree, that's why I'd ask Eric, not just not look at the CPI, but look at new construction, which is nominal this year, maybe roughly 3 million to 5 million. But like I said, every dollar counts. So you're absolutely right. Thanks, Tom.
Kathy, if I may, this is Veres. I'm I'm going to say that I'm really happy to see this. And it is consistent with actually what I'm doing at Elgin Community College, and not just me, but our board. We are going to be freezing our levy this year as well, and we're actually going to freeze our our tuition rates. We're not going to increase them. Same thing, giving a break to not only the taxpayers, but also the students who attend. They're all related to COVID. I mean, it was has been a rough year. And I'm not saying, I I don't know what we're going to do next year, and I'm also referring to the college where I'm at, but I think this year was particularly hard because it was a surprise to all of us. We couldn't even prepare for this. It just came at us at a very difficult time. So and I'm sure our residents would appreciate this, and it would be consistent with what we've been doing before, where we've, you know, froze some of the fees or postponed some of our fees, et cetera. So I I think it's a good thing to do.
Right. And just again, to comment on yours, you know, one of the things we've done over the last eight to 10 years is really create a great fiscal policy that allows us to build that rainy day fund. And we're at a rainy day day. And so, you know, like you said, we never expected 2020, walking into it to be COVID-19 and but more importantly, you know, people, people are hurting. It's uncertain, there's a lot of uncertainty, and we don't, we don't, we need to give back. So thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions regarding the levy? All right, well, not hearing none, I will ask for a vote then. Kathleen?
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Hennick?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
Trustee Kargi?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. And I I'm sure our taxpayers. Thank you. All right, so we're going to go on to the next item, which is a 9B. If I can ask for a motion in a second?
I move to direct the EDC to review and provide a recommendation to the Village Board on the proposed sign ordinance amendments.
Second.
Second.
All right, yes, make sure everybody can hear me okay. All right, I've got a presentation that I would like to walk you through tonight. Let me just get to my screen share a second. I feel like signs need a few visual aids. Yep, thank you. You're welcome. Here we go. All right. So good evening. Thank you, President, EDC and Village Trustees, for the opportunity to walk you through the proposed sign amendments, sign ordinance amendments that are included in your packet. The goal tonight, as you just noted in your motion, is to introduce the issue to you and take any questions or comments that you have, and then we will present these amendments to the Economic Development Commission before we bring it back to you at a subsequent board meeting for your final consideration. The sign ordinance went through its last major review and overhaul in 2011. Since that time, a Supreme Court ruling made content-based sign regulations unenforceable. Further through our experience administering the sign ordinance, we have identified language and regulations that would benefit from clarification and updating. Village staff have worked with Jackie Wells of Housiel Levine to review the ordinance and identify these amendments. Jackie was unable to attend tonight's meeting. She's done a good job for us, and John Housiel is participating remotely and standing by, ready to answer any questions that you might have for him. So with that, I'd like to take a few minutes and just walk you through the amended sign ordinance. So as I mentioned, there was a Supreme Court ruling in the case of Reed v. Gilbert that rendered content-based regulations unenforceable. And the rule of thumb that we use in determining whether or not something is a content-based regulation is that if we have to read the sign to determine whether or not it complies with our regulations, then those regulations may be subject to challenge and are unenforceable. The only remaining content-based regulation that we can have is to ensure that directional signage, which is directing pedestrians and drivers on a particular site, are appropriate and regulated appropriately. We can still regulate where signs are located, how big they are, how many you can have, how they're lit, whether or not they're installed with a permit, and what types of signs are allowed on specific zoning lots, or excuse me, specifically zoned districts. So the sign ordinance really categorizes permits into or signs, excuse me, into two broad categories, those that can't be installed anywhere and signs that can be installed either with or without a permit. Within the category of prohibited signs, all content-based regulations have been removed in the proposed amendments, and we've listed here what remains as a prohibited sign. Signs that exist but are no longer allowed are considered legally non-conforming signs. These signs can be maintained, however, once they come down, they must be replaced with a sign that complies with the village's regulations at that time. Other than content-based regulations, there's only one material change to the list of prohibited signs, and that's to define and prohibit outline lighting. So we've given an example here of what outline lighting looks like. Internally, there's been some debate on our team as to whether or not this constitutes an attention-getting device. And attention-getting devices, as we noted previously, at the top of that list, are prohibited signs. So to provide clarity and to achieve a certain aesthetic in the village's commercial corridors, we are recommending that outline lighting be prohibited, and the amendments that are proposed incorporate that.
Hey, Lisa?
Yes.
Is is that signage that you show, is that interior or exterior?
That is exterior. So it, yeah, so it's, let me turn to the definition in the ordinance, but it's really the lighting that outlines the perimeter frame. But that's a good question. If it's not clear, I think our intent here was strictly exterior windows.
So let me just ask the question then. So what happens if somebody just flips it around and takes it three inches off the inside window?
Well, the way we have it defined, I guess no, wouldn't specifically limit it. So an arrangement of incandescent lamps, LEDs, or other electrically powered light sources that call attention to certain features such as the shape of a building or the decoration of a window. It doesn't specifically limit it to exterior window signs, or excuse me, exterior windows.
If I can real quickly, Lisa, this is John Housiel. It doesn't matter, Trustee O'Connell, if it's effects to the outside or the inside of the window, if it's designed, placed, displayed with the intent of being viewed outside as a sign or an attention-getting device, it counts as a sign.
That's what I was looking for. Thanks, John.
Okay. Thank you. Good question. Thanks, Bob. So in addition to signs that are allowed without a permit, I tried to create a quick reference table of which signs are allowed per zoning district. And I would note that, of course, signs are really only allowed with the exception of some signs, such as yard signs or post signs that we'll talk about in a minute. What we're really focusing on are the signs that are allowed in the commercial and PRI district now. So just to make a couple of notes about this quick reference table here, in the C1 district on North Avenue, I just want to point out that when we talk about monument and pylon signs, they're allowed one or the other, but not both. The C2 district is essentially Madison Street, and as you know, the PRI zoning district is really kind of scattered throughout the community at different locations. We have introduced two sign types on this table that you are probably familiar with but haven't seen before in the sign code, and those are the projecting and sandwich board signs, which I'll talk about in just a minute here. And I would also note on this table, anytime you see the double asterisk, it means that these signs are allowed, but only as part of an approved plan development. So moving on to those kind of broad categories of signs, we have signs that are permitted that you don't have to get a permit from the building department to install. We've taken a look at the zone, excuse me, the sign ordinance and have removed all content-based regulations, and what's listed here is what remains. Previously, the ordinance included categories of signs such as real estate signs, political signs, and residential private sale signs. Removing the content-based regulations would have had the effect of prohibiting all of these sign types, which really wasn't our intention. Instead, we're proposing new language and definitions of signs to accommodate them. And while we can't regulate what the sign says, we are working to accommodate these sign types. So previously, you would have seen in our ordinance something called a real estate sign. Under the content-based regulations, that would have been removed. So instead, we've introduced something here called a post sign. And again, we can't control what's written on the sign, so it could be used for other purposes, but it would accommodate residents, property owners, realtors trying to advertise the sale of a home. So that's the effect of this new definition of a post sign. And we do have some regulations here on height and sign area. In addition, as we talked about the sign recycling program earlier, what we're really talking about there are what we would have previously defined as political signs or residential sale signs. So now we're just calling them yard signs. Again, we're not telling you what you can put on them, we're just telling you how big they can be, how many you can have, how long you can display them, and defining them so that we're all on the same page about what a yard sign is. Pardon me?
How long?
So let me go back to that. Yard signs are, oh, I'm sorry, four signs at a time displayed concurrently, so four per yard. And actually, I don't think we say how long. Okay. So for as long as you want, unless it says otherwise here, but I can clarify that.
Yeah, and if I can real quickly, say, when it used to be political signs, we would say a certain amount of time up to the election and a certain amount post-election, or if it was a real estate sign, you know, X number of days after the house was sold. But now that we can't differentiate between political sign and a real estate sign, somebody might have an OPRF lacrosse booster sign or a Fenwick girls' lacrosse team sign or whatever, and those could be up for months and months and months. So we, since we can't regulate content, we just we took out the time they could be in someone's yard because it includes every type of yard sign. So we took away the limits as to how long they could be up.
Yep, thanks, John.
Can I ask a question here quickly, since we're on these post signs? So I know they've been referred to as realty signs, and that's what's been allowed. And it's my understanding, talking to a business owner in town who does development and has been told in the past that he was not able to have his business sign in front of the property as he's doing the work, does changing this from, we're not saying content, would this now allow for somebody like that to put in a post sign with the business information when he's doing work?
Yes.
Okay. And so then, in this case, too, we're also not limiting how long that could be up?
We are limiting post signs. So they are one post sign displayed at any time for a period not to exceed six months in a calendar year.
Okay, so the post signs are limited time, but we're saying the yard signs now don't have a limited time?
Correct.
All right, moving on. As we noted earlier, we can continue to allow and regulate onsite traffic directional signage as well as temporary window signs. And we'll spend a few minutes talking about window signs in a little bit, but temporary window signs are ultimately incorporated into the total amount of window sign area that can be posted in any window frame. We'll talk about that in just a minute. Also, as we previously mentioned, a sign that you're probably all familiar with but wasn't previously included in the sign ordinance is a sandwich board sign. We are proposing that a definition be incorporated into the sign amendment to allow these signs, but only to allow them within the C3 business district. We think it adds to the pedestrian feel, and businesses such as River Forest Chocolates, coffee shops, pastry shops often like to use these types of signs to advertise their goods. And so we're saying that they should be allowed to do that without requiring a permit from the village.
Lisa, I had a question here. So I I know like Concordia, when they do special events and things, they have signs that say free parking or parking this way and things. Do they need a permit now then to put those up? Because it's going to be on public.
Are you talking about a sandwich board sign like this?
Yeah.
I mean, technically, they're really only allowed in the C3 rather than in the PRI, but we could consider allowing them in the PRI as well for... The only thing we would want to be mindful of, and I'm just thinking out loud here in response to your question, because it's a good question, is I don't know if we would be able to limit it strictly to special events because that may constitute a content-based regulation, and John will weigh in here in just a second, but we would have to be thoughtful about perhaps where they could go and how long they could go up.
Trustee Bachner, are you referring to like, you know, the signs that say...
Trustee Bachner, are you referring to like, you know, the signs that say, you know, special event parking here, emissions day, you know, park here, those types of signs?
Yes, like they just, you know, they have events all the time, right? And so they're, they're always wayfinding people on the sidewalks with these kinds of signs.
Yeah, if I can ju-
Yeah, those could also fall under the category of onsite directional signage.
Right, so Trustee Bachner asks a really good question, and that's one of the differentiating things where you can get into content if it's for like safety and traffic movement and things like that, because it's content, but it's safety-related. It's not advertising or recognition or anything like that. So if for a special event you had, you enter here, parking here, special event this way to try to provide safe navigation and circulation to accommodate something like that, that would not be prohibitive. We could take a look at the ordinance to make sure that that is accommodated, but that's, you can have those provisions for safety purposes or traffic management purposes that are not subject to the same level of content scrutiny as typical signage. That's a real good question, and Trustee Bachner, we can go back and take a look at that.
That would be great, yeah, because it's all the time.
Thinking if it says special event today versus parking this way, those are kind of two different things.
Right.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I'm a little concerned about the signs on Lake Street. Is the sidewalk wide enough, in your opinion, to accommodate those signs? I mean, because it's, there's no parkway on Lake, on Lake, if I remember correctly. So do you run the risk of pushing people out into the street if there's two people or three people passing? That's, that was one concern I had when considering that.
We can go out and survey it, but we've taken a look at it before, and yeah, it would be wide enough to accommodate this, because not only do we need to allow pedestrians to pass, but we need to allow people who are in wheelchairs to be able to pass. And so we took that into consideration when ensuring that three feet of sidewalk is supposed to be preserved here. And my last recollection of the field conditions would allow all of it, but we can verify that.
And to your question, Trustee Cargie, you're only allowed one of these per tenant space. It has to be a certain distance from your door. You have to maintain, like Lisa said, that ADA minimum clearance of three feet plus. So you're, at no point are you providing, providing a choke point on the sidewalk. So we wouldn't have a lot. We may have a couple or a few, but it should not prevent any obstacles. In fact, they couldn't place it on a point where it would prevent safe passage.
And if it's not allowed in the parkway either, correct, John?
If there's, if there's, well, again, if there is a parkway on Lake Street, there isn't a parkway on the street. It is hard sidewalk from back of curb to door, with the exception of where the planters are, but there's no, or tree grate or planter. There's no true parkway, I believe, on Lake Street on the business side.
As you move further east, there is. So you move east from Lake Street, or from Lake, rather, so down in front of the medical buildings and, you know, down towards, you know, there's, there's a stretch in there that does have a parkway.
I, we can double-check. It's meant to be on a sidewalk with preserved space for passage. We could look to see if we could put one on the parkway. Right now, it's got to be on the sidewalk.
Okay, thanks.
It's a good question.
Yeah, we'd also want to check too where it switches. I don't know the exact point where it switches from C3 to ORIC.
Right.
So we'd have to take a look at that as well. Or C3 to some other district, but yeah. Okay, thank you. Very good question. That's why we bring it for the discussion. These are great points that you're bringing up. So switching gears just a little bit here and focusing on the signs that require permits, within the category of signs that are allowed but require permits, once again, all content-based regulations have been removed from the sign ordinance, and we've listed what remains here. Each of these sign types are not only regulated by height, size, and location, and lighting, they're also regulated by zoning district, as referenced in that table that I shared with you just a few minutes ago. So just kind of running down the list here, when we look at awning and canopy signs, these signs are currently allowed in all commercial zoning districts and are subject to size, area, and height restrictions, as you can see depicted here, and these are not changing within the proposed amendments. And just as a point of reference, all of these graphics are proposed to be incorporated into the sign ordinance to help illustrate to the reader what we're talking about. Monument signs, those are also currently allowed in certain zoning districts and will continue to be allowed, subject to size, area, setback, height, and lighting restrictions, which are also not changing under the proposed amendments. Going back to a new classification of sign, in order to create an appealing pedestrian environment, we're proposing the creation of a new sign category called projecting signs, which you may also commonly hear referred to as blade signs. We're proposing that they be allowed in the C3 district by right and in the ORIC district as part of a plan development. And the goal here again is to just really create site identification for pedestrians who are walking down the street and may not see wall signs because they're just above their point of reference. Currently, the sign ordinance contains a classification of sign called a gas station price sign, and that essentially amounts to a content-based regulation. So we had to pull that out. And instead, we're introducing an amendment that defines pylon signs, which you would see depicted here. Under the proposed amendment, pylon signs are only allowed in the C1 zoning district, so that remains the same as to where they're allowed. But what we're suggesting now is that they be limited to 20 feet in height as a maximum or to the top of the canopy. So if it's at a gas station, the pylon sign could be the same height as the canopy over the pump, but it couldn't exceed it. So it's the, the top of the canopy or 20 feet, whichever is lower. And that we also limit the sign faces to 80 square peat, feet per sign face in area.
Hey Lisa, can I ask a question? For example, right now McDonald's on their drive-through, when you're ordering to have those signs there, would this fall under the category of the pylon?
No, that would be a drive-through sign, John, correct?
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and those are only allowed as part of an approved plan development, and there is a plan development on that site.
Okay, thank you.
So Lisa, sorry, just to clarify as far as the height requirement, so it looks like on the picture here that this mobile sign goes higher than the canopy that's over the... Are you saying with this new, that particular sign wouldn't be approved if it has to be... Is that what I'm, is that what I'm, am I understanding that correctly? That the canopy is one height and the pylon needs to be 20 feet or the height of the canopy?
You are correct, yeah. So anytime you make changes to a code like this, you may have the effect, although it's not necessarily the intention, you may have the effect of creating new legally non-conforming signs.
Sure. Yeah, I'm not saying that has to come down, but I'm just saying that with, that with this new change would not be allowed.
You are correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Trustee Henick, there's only a few pylon signs in the village that we looked at. There's a few on North Avenue, then there's a couple of gas stations. Cassidy Tire would have some legal nonconformities due to size and because they have two on a relatively small site, you're only going to be allowed to have one. And the other gas station on Chicago and Harlem, this would not create a nonconformity. So we tried to minimize nonconformities or grandfathered in, but we think the height of this one may be one, and Cassidy Tire may be another site that would create some legal nonconformity with what they've got right now.
Okay.
But there's only literally a few pylon signs in the village.
Right, right. Yeah, I would say the majority of the community is wall sign, window sign, and monument.
Absolutely, yeah.
So the only concern, the only concern I have when, when you talk about something like that is, you know, in a particular instance like this, you know, what kind of, if any, traffic issues come up? So someone making a right turn on red, I don't know if, if it's the case in this particular one, but you know, if, if the mobile station is where the Sheridan is right now, could we potentially have some sightline issues?
So one of the things that's incorporated into the new regulations regarding pylon signs are setback requirements and a prohibition on locating a pylon sign in one of the site triangles to avoid exactly the issue you're, you're bringing up.
Right. And the other thing, to your point, Trustee O'Connell, is Lisa, I think, mentioned this at the beginning, we now put in place variation procedures for signs, and previously, I don't believe there were any. So now, if you have a unique circumstance for your site where the sign code would not allow, like safety or something else, you could seek grounds for variation to get a sign that would work for your site because the regulations don't. We will now have variation procedures with which someone can at least apply for relief if they need to.
That was going to be my question, is just around the safety, especially at that location where there's going to be a new tall building. Yeah.
Yes, to Trustee Bachner, safety trumps, and to Trustee O'Connell as well. O'Connell, safety trumps everything, and these regulations, even if this mobile sign were completely removed and a conforming one would go up, it would meet all the safety protocols for line of sight and, and things like that. So we made sure that the new regulations would more than accommodate for safety.
Thank you, all right. The sign ordinance allows and will continue to allow wall signs. The one nuance to that is that we do require, and this is the current regulations, that all letters be individually affixed to the building, subject to sign restrictions. So what we don't allow is the installation of a new box sign. It's a pretty common sign type, and you can't put a new one up, but if you have an existing non-conforming box sign, you can change out the face. So if you have a tenant in your building, you can insert a new panel in that sign, but once that sign comes down, then when you put a sign back up, the letters have to be affixed to the wall individually. And that's our current regulations. We're not proposing any changes to it.
Right, and, and real quickly, because this came up when we worked on the code back in 2011, was it doesn't require that individual drilled holes into the masonry or the building have to be done for each individual letter. The individual letters could be on another mounting rack, and then the two holes could hold that rack against the building. So even though it's called individually affixed, it's individually affixed or another mounting bar or rack system. So it looks like they're individually affixed letters if they're not, but it won't require a bunch of drills, holes in the building to mount it, only a few, so.
Right, and we'll talk about that in just a second when we talk about how sign area is calculated. So I mentioned earlier that there were temporary window signs that are still allowed, and you don't need a permit from the village to get them, but you do need a permit from the village to get a permanent window sign. And what we're suggesting is that permanent window signs, that they be defined, which they're not currently in the code, and that they be defined as anything that's more than 50% opaque that contains copy. And so if you have a really transparent sign, and it's just an image of a cat, and you're a veterinarian, you could have that, and it doesn't count towards your sign area. But if it's something a little bit different, if it's 100% opaque, meaning you can't see through it at all, and it says veterinarian, or it has copy on it, excuse me, then it would count towards it. So what we're saying is to control the amount of window signage, to prevent signs or prevent windows from just being completely plastered with signs, that we restrict window signs to 25% of the window frame. If there are temporary signs, they can occupy an additional 5% of the window frame for a maximum of 30% of the window covered at any time, and that's per window.
I think a good example of this real quickly is, remember when Mint Dentistry used to be in that space next to River Forest Chocolates on Lake Street? They had sort of a film semi-transparency thing over the window because right on the other side of the window was a dental chair. And so they had something there, it just had like a leaf or, you know, like some sort of organicky leafy plant thing. It was very nice-looking, pleasant, no copy, it wasn't 100% opaque. That sort of film or semi-transparent film on the window would not count as a sign, and we don't want that to count as a sign. So that's an example of, we want to accommodate that sort of semi-transparent screening without copy, without copy necessary for some uses at the ground floor, but we don't want that to count as signage. So that's why that's written that way.
So what about over by Town Center, actually by like the Panera thing? Is it like a massage place or something? Or maybe it's different now, but they've got those winter, windows frosted?
Right.
And so would that count?
No.
As a permanent window sign?
No, there's no copy on that at all. So I, so the answer is no, it's not signage, it's not copy, it's not advertising, there's no anything on it. It's just a certain level of opacity to keep, prevent people from looking in. So that would not count as a sign per definition of this. We can take a look at that again. I don't know exactly, are you talking about the building that's just to the west of Panera? The block over?
It's Massage Envy.
Yeah, 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 yeah. We can go back and take a look at that, but the intent is not to, the intent is not to have something like that count as a sign. Because in some ground floor commercial spaces, you may need some kind of semi-transparent screening, and we understand that.
Yeah, that's sort of treated no differently than a frosted window. Because that's ultimately the effect.
Right. But we can go back and take a look exactly at that use.
You know, they have them. Down in River Forest, others, you ever go to the Forest National Bank? All their windows are covered, but they can look out, but you can't walk in. Is that something like that?
Um, well, I mean, it's, if you think about like a shower door that almost has a film on it, it's sort of like that. I mean, these are ultimately vinyl window clings is what they really are.
So does that count?
No, so it wouldn't unless it's, it has copy on it.
I got you.
Yeah. So we want to get businesses, especially gyms, dentists, salons, they want to have some level of privacy for their customers, and so we want to allow that. What we don't necessarily want to allow is a window that has Edet Joe's plastered a million times and is covering the entire window.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Sure. All right, so as we talk about, when John was talking about individually affixed letters and being mounted to some sort of backing, this is what we're talking about. So this is just an amendment that we're proposing to clarify what's in the sign ordinance, to help define what a sign backing is, and to help define how we measure the area. So when we have a nice, simple geometric backing, that's just a plain old rectangle, that's really easy to calculate what that sign area is. But when we start getting into interesting geometry, John and his team have proposed some language that allows us to figure out how we measure the area of that sign, and essentially, it's the closest geometric shape up to, is it one or two shapes, to be able to help us define that sign area. So in the case of a nice rectangular sign, real easy. In the case of some sort of rhombus, it gets a little bit complicated. And so we're proposing some amendments here to help staff just calculate what the sign area is and to help the applicants better understand what's going to count, so that when they come in for their sign permit, they can get it right the first time and there's not a lot of back and forth.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to struggle to attempt to describe to you what a foot candle is, and I'm sure John will have to correct me, but essentially-
I'm glad, I'm glad this is being recorded. This will be good. These are, these are, with new lighting technology, some of this stuff is getting increasingly tricky, so.
Yeah, it is. It's, so it's, it's a difficult concept, at least in my brain, to understand. Maybe it comes easier to other people, but essentially, a foot candle is lighting intensity. It's how much a surface is illuminated from one foot away from a light source. Right now, in the zoning ordinance, or excuse me, in the sign ordinance, which is not a part of the zoning ordinance, it's part of the business regulation, but at any rate, it is 175-foot candles. That's pretty bright. When we took a look at that, Jackie at Houseill, Houseill's firm recommended that we lower it, that 175-foot candles is pretty intense, and best practice right now would be something more in the range of 100 to 120. Taking into consideration the fact that we already have 175, we opted to, to recommend on the high side of what is the best practice. And really, the purpose here is to just control the intensity of lighting. We have a lot of commercial corridors and commercial businesses. Certainly, we want people to be able to find them, but given their proximity to residential uses, we want to try to limit sources of conflict between the two, and lighting seem to be kind of a low-hanging fruit in that area.
I think the best way to think about this is just anecdotally, we all know when we're driving down the street and there's that one business sign that is so bright you almost have to squint, like, oh my God, that is, side is so bright. Or that gas station canopy that you could probably see from the moon. I mean, it is so lit up, it seems the brightness itself is an attention-getting device. So we research best practices on what is typical versus what most ordinances look at at different levels of intensity at a range of commercial application that is on the higher side, but what we had in the past, and although I don't have any examples in the village that were that intense, if someone came in and proposed it and we're legally allowed to do it, we'd know it. So we're proposing something that is more in the spectrum of normal before we got something that was crazy bright. So this should accommodate anything we're more than likely to ever see in River Forest.
True. And when we have signs that come in, we typically request a cut sheet, particularly in the case of plan developments. Anytime there's exterior lighting, exterior illuminated signage, we request cut sheets from the sign manufacturer so that we can take a look at what the foot candles are at the property line to try, again, to prevent, you know, just bright light shining in people's windows. All right, closing out my comments here. So just a few final amendments that we're proposing in the sign ordinance. The first one is with regard- proposing in the sign ordinance. The first one is with regard to violations. The way the current sign ordinance reads, violations are only applicable to temporary signs. So we are suggesting that that language be moved to more of the general requirements for the sign ordinance, so that it is applicable to the entire sign ordinance and all signs within the village. And then temporary signs, so previously, we would have allowed banners, and they're defined specifically in the ordinance, we would have only allowed them up for a period of time in conjunction with the grand opening of a new business, but that's really tantamount to a content-based regulation. So what we did was to move banners into the temporary sign section that's towards the end of the ordinance. And right now, you're allowed to put up two banners per year. We're suggesting that that be increased to three. I think what we're seeing is that, you know, certainly in years like 2020, when businesses are trying to pivot as quickly as they can to advertise their services, the fact that they're open or not open, or what the restrictions are, we wanted to give them a little bit more flexibility. We don't see a ton of banner signs, permits coming in from the businesses. We see them more from the universities, and so we're also trying to accommodate them and just... This would apply to, again, we can't control content, so it could be anything from wear your mask to, you know, move in start August 1st.
Yeah, and these traditionally, in most codes across the country, were like grand opening banners, or they had totally different sets of regulations for like religious institutions that might be advertising sign up for, you know, religious classes, or, you know, youth softball league is going to start, you know, in Keystone Park. But now, we can't regulate by public use versus religious use versus commercial grand opening. We just have to homogenize any potential application of the temporary sign. So those specific regulations in terms of applicability, we can't do anymore.
Can I ask a couple of clarifications on the temporary signs? So are these... So this would be for businesses, and like you said, churches, the universities. Does this apply to residents in any way at all, being able to have a... Get a permit for a temporary sign like this?
So temporary signs are really intended for the non-residential districts. If it's a banner in a residential district, yard signs and post signs are really what are intended for use in the residential district, more so than a banner. John?
Well, I thought they were not allowed.
Right, that was my understanding.
Yeah, banners are not permitted in residential districts currently.
Okay.
Right.
And did I see somewhere that there is a fee for the permit for these signs?
For temporary signs?
Right.
Yes.
Yes. Was it $100? Is that it, that they're...
It's 50 or 100 bucks.
Okay. And then, is there a timeframe of how long they can be up?
Yep.
Yes. Let's see, no more than three times a year, and each sign can't exceed 90 calendar days. So you could have
Okay.
170 days out of the year with a temporary banner, but 90 days per banner.
So like, are banners for COVID, are they exempt because of government?
My... We could have Greg answer that, but typically, if it is a government sign, most cities don't count that against themselves, or how long they can be up if it's for a government purpose, but...
So signs permitted without a permit include governmental signs. So Greg, you would have to weigh in on whether or not that constitute a governmental sign.
Yeah, and the ordinance includes text that River Forest units of government may install temporary streetlight banners on village-owned streetlights not to exceed 180 days, and be extended by an additional 180 days upon approval of the village. So there is additional permission, at least, for the streetlight signs. I'm not sure if those are the ones that you're referring to.
No, I'm talking about the ones that we've just put up for-
Like the COVID signs.
Right.
I can take a look at the draft ordinance and follow up with Lee.
So, but again, we've had, trying to think, we've had two banners. So we had a census banner, and we've had a COVID banner.
Census banner, sensible.
And so we would still, even within our own regulations, we would still be operating within our own regulations.
Right.
But if there's a desire to change that, or to expand or shrink it, we certainly can.
It sounds like there's 180 days before we renew it. So you're saying that for the banners, there isn't anything?
Right, yeah, at least in the draft ordinance. But Lisa and I can work on that, and maybe we just expand the scope of the governmental streetlight signs to the governmental temporary sign.
Right.
Lisa, just going back to, I apologize, just going back to the residential portion of this, and you mentioned posts. And so like having those up for, I think you said six months. So for real estate signs, then, you know, sometimes places are on the market for longer than six months. Does that mean a post then would have to come down?
Let me take a look. I thought there was language in here that would give us the ability to
Invite an extension.
Renew.
Renew, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, it would have to be, yeah, for sure.
And those are some of-
You don't want the sales up for six months, but in case there is-
Right. And those are some of the realities, Trustee Bachner, we got to try to deal with. So you write in there, you seldom get abuses to this stuff. It's just when you do that people sort of take note and call in and complain, but nobody's going to leave a post sign in their front yard longer than they likely need to. And if it has to stay up beyond the six months to facilitate the sale of a property, that's something that we can easily write in as granting. And the code right now has that provision.
Yeah, so right in the definition of post signs, display period extensions may be granted by the zoning administrator, which is the village administrator.
Which is Eric, yeah.
Yeah.
I have another question regarding the post signs, then. So I believe when the home kitchen was approved, there was some conversation around that there couldn't be signage in front of the house. Is that correct?
Yeah, that falls within a different section of the code, but you are correct.
But so to, now, obviously, it wouldn't be permanent, but like, say, if that person wanted for six months to put up that she has this home kitchen, does this now allow her to do that?
Well, we wouldn't be able to regulate based on what that sign says. So I would have to take a look at it, but I believe, Greg, can you weigh in on this? Does the other section of the ordinance control the other section of the code? Because there's specific regulations regarding home kitchen operations and home-based businesses.
Right. Under the zoning ordinance, a home occupation, I believe, cannot be advertised from the home, which itself is a content-based restriction. But I think the point is that you allow home occupations in a limited way. You don't want to allow your residential districts to become commercial districts. So I think that the zoning code would still apply there. And by someone agreeing to perform a home occupation, I think they could have to accept that condition.
Right. So again, the home occupations, the intent of home occupations is to allow people to have businesses at home. We like that, but not to change the residential character of a neighborhood, because it's residential first and foremost. And so historically, ordinances across the country have almost universally said, home occupations cannot have signage, because that is differentiating it from commercial or residential character. So that's not regulating content, that's just saying you can't have a sign. And Reed v. Gilbert doesn't say anything about the fact that you can't say you can't have a sign. So we're not regulating the content of what you can or cannot say on a sign. We're saying you can't have the sign, and that's okay. So right now, home occupations in the zoning ordinance are not allowed to have signage in residential districts.
No, okay, so I understand that, but I guess it just seems like taking away the content piece of it almost provides that loophole. Maybe not.
Patty, it may, and that's the challenge of, a lot of people don't like this Reed v. Gilbert decision, but the bottom line is, too bad we're stuck with it. And it's challenging, and without getting into content, and you allow a certain type of sign, I mean, in theory, they could put up one of those two-foot by three-foot, like, temporary real estate-type signs.
Right.
And they could have those up, what, for 90 days at a crack, and have three of those, or whatever, however many a year. So in effect, they could have a sign up all the time. So there's a way to get around some of this stuff that's, you cannot regulate out of existence, other than to say you can't have yard signs, but we don't want to do that. So there may be situations where people take advantage. We hope not, but it's impossible to write a code that 100% prevents that. If that's the intent, you will find a way, I guess is the best way to state it, so...
Okay. But it's a good question, and we can
Oh, yeah.
clarify some of that as we bring this back to the village board.
And many municipalities haven't engaged their sign ordinances since this decision came down. And so best practices are still evolving, there's still litigation over what is content restrictions mean. The United States Supreme Court at some point will look at the next step down this path, because in 2011, Supreme Court rewrote 150 years of case law on the First Amendment. So tweaks are forthcoming, you could expect some further tweaks to your sign ordinance even after this major rewrite is done.
The initial ruling was literally, you can't regulate commercial speech different than religious speech. But the way it was interpreted when the gavel came down was content-based, which is pretty broad-reaching. So my guess is it may very well get revised through case law over time.
Has it been revised already? When I looked it up, it looked like it was from 2015, this court ruling. Has it been revised since then?
Yeah. So not specifically with regard to signs, it's been applied in the context of panhandling, to strike down a lot of panhandling violations, including in the city of Springfield a couple times in the Federal Court of Appeals. So Patty, it hasn't, there's not a lot of further guidance on municipal sign codes, which is what the original case was decided on, but more generally, it's been used to attack other content-based speech regulations by government.
Thanks.
My guess is the approach that we're taking, and that other firms are taking and cities are taking across the country, will stay in place until we start saying, people taking advantage of certain loopholes to the point where municipalities feel compelled to try to regulate them, and then we'll see how those hold up.
Yep. So the plan is to have the board, which already made your motion, to direct us to take this to the EDC at their next meeting, and then we'll bring it back to you for final consideration.
Yeah, I think it's great. Yeah, great job. Thank you.
Do we need a vote on that since it was a motion?
No, it's, oh yeah, we need a vote, because it was a motion. So Kathleen, unless there's any further questions, I think we're ready for the vote. Kathleen?
Okay, Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Hennig?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
Trustee Kargi?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. So that ends our session for the new business. Do you want to go through the meeting?
Yeah. So just looking at the calendar here, as we start to wind down 2020, we would have, normally have a meeting on November 23, and then a meeting on December 14. The main kind of last action that we have to take action on is the tax levy. And so the 23rd is the week of Thanksgiving, which we could not approve the tax levy that night because there hasn't been enough time elapsed, but we could do it on the 30th. So what, just offering up to the board, if you would like, instead of meeting on December 14, and instead of meeting on November 23, we could combine those meetings into one on November 30. So just throwing that out there, because it's a five Monday month.
That's fine with me.
No problem.
Okay. So then, hearing no objection, I think that's what we'll do going forward. All right, very good. So then, our next board meeting will be November 30, as a special board meeting.
Correct.
And then, can I just clarify, so then and then not again until December 28, is that right? Is that what it comes out to then?
No, not until January. So we typically don't meet the second, we don't-
Because of Christmas.
Because of the holiday.
Holiday.
Yep. So we don't meet the second meeting in December. So your next meeting would be, unless, of course, unless some emergency or something comes up, we could always call a meeting. But January 11 would be your next meeting.
So meeting November 30, and then not again until January 11?
Correct. And we can hold the date for December, but as long as the tax levy gets approved on the 30th.
All right. If I can get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
I'm sorry, who, so time moved, who seconded?
I seconded.
Okay, Katie, thank you. Okay.
Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
Trustee Kargi?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Hennig?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Okay, 8:48, adjourned.
All right, very good. Thank you so much. Enjoy your evening, and we'll talk to you soon. Thank you. Good night.
Bye.
Good night.